Go ahead. John. You good, John?
Good job.
All right, very well. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Zoning Board of Appeals for tonight's agenda, Wednesday, December 11, 2019. And it is 6:35. We just got here, sir. It's 6:35 PM at room 320 at the Multiservice Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. I'm gonna call the meeting to order, make a roll call. My far right, Mr. Robert Haskell, our clerk, Jim Akabachi. My far left, Jake Morrison, Attorney General Kendrick, town planner, Ken Buckland, myself, the Chair, Nazir Al Kolasi. Also, we have present professional engineer, independent consulting, Mr. Charles Rowley. We have some minutes to do, take us few minutes, and we'll give it to the public hearing. The minute's 13. Who read them? I didn't.
I have not.
Bob, did you read the minutes?
I don't think anybody's reviewed them. I'll review them during the meeting.
All right, let's table them to the end. Jake, I don't know, you didn't read them nearly January. Okay.
I think they may not have been done.
Yeah, I don't think we've received them.
I think the reason why you didn't read them is because you don't have them.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so. Okay.
Sonya will continue the minute at November 13 for next meeting, for the minutes. Okay. Just for the record, Veronica, the Lebanese walked in. It's 6:36 PM. All right, we have a request for minor modification for Rosebrook Place.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
How are you, Counselor? How are you feeling? How you been? Good?
Sounds familiar. Have you been here before?
Feel good? Feel better?
Yeah.
For the benefits of Alzheimer's, I get to meet new people every minute.
All right.
Let me explain what brought me here tonight and suggest a resolution. The first of the three plans that I've just given you is the plan that was originally approved in 2011 for Rosebrook Place, which is shown as Lot A on that plan. The second plan was a division of Lot A in 2012, creating Lot B, which contains the Marriott Hotel, and Lot A1, which contains everything else. It contains what is now the apartment building, as well as the retail uses in front of the apartment building. The third plan is the plan that prompted my request for a minor modification. It subdivides Lot A-1 on the second plan into A-2 and A-3 on the third plan. And the purpose, the purpose of doing so, frankly, was to make accounting for common expenses easier for the make-piece company by putting different uses on separate parcels. Because, for example, leases, as you know, triple-net leases require tenants to pay their portion of common expenses. And if, for tax purposes, for example, the apartment complex were on its own lot, it would make it easier, and it would leave the front lot, Lot A-3, to contain the 99 Restaurant, the Five Guys and Saga Fusion, and the Cape Cod Bank, and the Eye Center. So the difference between the second sheet and the third sheet is merely drawing the line that separates A2 and A3. Now, I requested that the board consider this as a minor modification, and I was hoping that if the board so considered it to be a minor modification, because there's no work whatsoever that's contemplated by the submission of this plan, I was hoping that the planning board, because of the global special permit and the site plan approval, would sign the ANR plan that is the third sheet. The problem we ran into on Monday night is that the planning board felt that unless this board granted us a variance from the frontage requirement for Lot A-2, because A-2 does not contain 150 feet of frontage. It contains 112 and some feet of frontage. Unless we got a variance from this board, they could not sign the plan. And I had already made an appointment to come before you with respect to this plan. But fortunately, Mr. Rowley was present at the planning board meeting, and I was informed this morning that he had an idea that might resolve this. So I want to show you another sheet.
Put a little angle at the lot line.
Just for purposes, just creating different lots.
Right here, what you have to do, do this one, right there.
No, you can't do that. That was suggested. The problem is, we would not have enough frontage on A3, because there's a no-access privilege. What Charlie suggested was to create a new way, a new right-of-way, and submit it as a Form C subdivision plan to the planning board. And that new right-of-way would be in an area which is already used as a connector drive. It's paved, it has sidewalks. And if, in fact, we submitted a plan that showed that new right-of-way, then the modified apartment house lot will have enough frontage, because it'll have 150 feet of frontage on that right-of-way, and as well as its existing frontage on Rosebrook Place, and the retail lot will have the same.
I'm following you to a point.
Yeah.
The new, referred to as a right-of-way, the new right-of-way would become owned by Lot A1?
Well, it would be, like any private way, it would be owned to the midpoint by its abutters. But it would be technically a way, just like Rosebrook Way is a way. So it becomes, the fee in the way is owned to the midpoint by both the butters, but it's basically a new stub, a new stub road off of Rosebrook Way.
Who owns and maintains Rosebrook Way?
Rosebrook Way, according to the plan, is a private way.
That's, I get it. So who owns it? AD?
Well, it's owned by its abutters to the midpoint, like any private way.
Okay. Was it created by Form C?
Yes. Oh, yes. And this new way would be created by Form C as well, even though it would call for no work. So...
So basically, you don't need us?
I don't need you unless you want to, unless, unless you want to insist that we apply for a variance.
I can't, personally, I don't think, we can grant you a variance without a lot line.
Pardon me?
If you don't create a lot line at the zoning board, we can grant a variance. So the planning board could grant this, like Sheet 3, that lot line, make your other lot, make the apartment lot non-confirmed, then come before us for a variance.
Well, they're taking the position, and I, and I, and I understand it, they're taking the position that they cannot sign, that I'd need to come forward to get a variance here first of Lot A2, as you see it on the third sheet.
But you don't have a lot, with all respect. The lot does not exist.
No, Lot, Lot, proposed, oh, I see. Yeah, well.
Catch 22.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, what you could do, if I may, you go to, I mean, you could do Form C, that's fine with us, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Or you could go to the planning board, create the slot, the Marriott's sold, right? You guys don't own that no more, right?
Pardon me?
The Marriott.
The Marriott is gone, yeah, yeah.
So you could create the slot line and come to us and get a variance, and if, well, if you don't get a variance, if you go to Salah or San, it's gonna, the title search is gonna show it's not confirming. And if you get a variance, you're good. You don't get a variance, you go back, eliminate it, and go back for Form C.
Understood, but there are plenty of times when an applicant will come before you with a proposed sketch plan and ask for a variance of the lot that's shown on the plan, and if the variance is granted, then he formalizes that into an ANR plan and goes to the planning board, and they endorse it.
I personally don't recall you ever done that. Plus, I don't think it's a good practice. With all due respect, I mean, I can't, we can't grant you a variance for something that doesn't exist.
Well, it...
How, let me put it this way. How can I grant you a variance for Lot A2?
Proposed Lot A2, okay? This is, you, under that scenario, Mr. Chairman, it would be a proposed lot, and we know the planning board's position with respect to it. And so we're asking, we would be asking the, the planning board to grant a variance to allow Lot A-2 to exist as a lot, assuming that we go to the planning board and have them endorse an ANR plan with the note of the variance on it. Either, either, either way, we'll accomplish the result.
So your wish is to go that way or to make a Form C? What's the wish is to win, so we could pass it to the board and ask? Your wish is for your original submission or that, what Charlie suggested?
I think it's cleaner, frankly, what Charlie suggested.
Okay, so that, so our decision doesn't mean anything?
Yeah, I don't, I, I, I don't, I don't need the modification.
Right. I mean, let's ask the board what they think.
Yeah, what they, I mean, I'll...
Robert, what do you think? What the heck of a...
What Charlie recommended, I think, is a much better situation to go forward with this. Everything is already existing. The road's there, the curbs are there, everything is there.
Yeah, and I, I can't imagine that there would be any substance opposition to a variance, but I never want to ask for a variance if I don't need one.
Correct, sir. Yeah, understood.
Veronica?
Yeah, I would agree. I would go with Charlie's suggestion, and also, what hardship would you be able to claim to grant you a variance?
Agreed.
Jake? No comments?
I agree.
You agree with Charlie?
No.
Can you have any?
No.
So...
What's the scoop of Old Tremont Street? Who owns that?
Well, that...
Just curious. Out front here, the piece out front.
State.
Does the state still own it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, it's nice not to be needed.
Well, do I take it at least that if, from this meeting, if I do proceed with the planning board and they do issue...
A lot line.
Approve a Form C plan, that this board won't consider that to be a substantial modification?
I'm, I'm okay with that. I don't know the rest. You could ask the board. I'm okay with it, either way.
I'm okay with it.
Yes.
Okay. I just suspect that they're gonna sell off the apartment building, because now they've created a separate...
That's fine.
...sell of a lot, and that's, that's a good, that's their business decision.
The only issue remaining is what to call the new right-of-way, and I was thinking of calling it Rowley Way, but I don't know whether...
Oops.
Which is, you know, especially since...
That's the second time it's been suggested, and I said no.
Especially since the first three letters of his name is R-O-W.
Ah, yeah.
In any event. That's, I appreciate your time, and I think it's a creative solution, and we'll follow it up.
Yeah. And like I said again, if you don't want to go Form C, I'm open to my suggestion personally, so, but...
If what?
I'm open, if you go with, like I suggested, get a lot line approved by them and come back for a variance, I'm okay.
They won't approve the lot line.
All right, very well. Thank you for coming. Public hearing, 45-19, Wareham Retail Management LLC, High Point Engineering, 1 Seth F. Toby Road, special permit or variance.
The Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on December 11, 2019, at 6:30 PM in room 320 of the Wareham Multiservice Center, Wareham, Mass., to consider petition number 4519 for a special permit or a variance from the requirements of Section 320 Table of Uses, and in Sections 1470 and 1471, variance of the Wareham zoning bylaws, to Wareham Retail Management LLC of 3,200 Telegraph Road, Suite 2015, Brigham Farms, Michigan, for a drive-through establishment at 1 Seth F. Toby Road, Wareham, Mass., Assessors Map 87, Lot 1, in the Strip Commercial Zoning District.
Okay, name and address for the record, please.
My name's Lindsay Wilson. I'm with Brown Rudnick. My address is 29 Tall Timbers Lane, Kingston, Mass. With me tonight, Derek Redgate, civil engineer on the project, and Sean Kelly, our traffic engineer.
Okay, just let us know what you're doing.
Great. Thank you for taking the time. This is an ongoing project that we began the first step forward with the planning board earlier this year. This is the out parcel of the Walmart development that consists of approximately four acres. Twice before, over the past 10 or 12 years, this out parcel's been permitted for a small commercial shopping center, retail development. The two prior approved site plans didn't go forward due to economic conditions at the time. Our client came in and purchased this site within the last year and is eagerly moving forward to develop the site. Starting almost a year ago to the day, we started working with Ken and the planning board on initial site plan approval, went through a series of iterations, comments with Charlie and the planning board to get the initial kickoff building approved on May 20th for the first building of a three-building development, which at the time was slated to be a total of 16,200 square feet. The current proposal is actually gonna reduce the square footage if we get the relief that we need, and the amended site plan as well. So the middle of the three proposed buildings is currently under construction, or at least the site work is under construction for the operation of an Aspen Dental. The building closest to the entrance is, we call Building 1, is what's at issue here. This, we've been trying eagerly to attract retailers. This fall, we finally gained interest by Starbucks to have them come to the site. Obviously, based on their current building program, that requires a drive-through. This property is located in the Strip Commercial District.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
It's okay.
Okay. And under the bylaw, currently, the restaurant with drive-through category is not permitted as of right in the Strip Commercial District, so we are doing a twofold process. This is step one, which is applying for a use variance to allow for a drive-through on Building 1. We're also in the process and have been talking with Ken about coming in, as we had promised, and are obligated to, under our initial site plan approval, for an amended site plan approval to the planning board. So we'll be making that filing shortly as well, but we need the relief of both this board and then the amended site plan through the planning board. So I'm gonna hand it over to Derek to kind of walk through the site plan, what's currently being proposed, then we can hand it over to Sean to talk about traffic effects and where we go from there.
Yes, Derek Redgate from High Point Engineering, and I'm the civil engineer on the project and put together the set of plans that, that you have. If it's okay with you, I'd like to go over to the board to point, do I need to take...
Yeah, they just struck, yeah, either take it with you or...
Talk loudly.
Or bring the board over here or something like that.
Okay, I'll bring the board closer to me.
And if you can identify Building Number 1, I'd appreciate that.
It's the yellow one.
It's the yellow.
Thanks.
So we've identified the building sort of in a left-to-right way. So Building Number 1 is the one that's closest to Walmart in the Walmart parking lot. Building Number 2 is actually the Aspen Dental in the middle. That's the building that, if you drive by, is currently under construction. It's been framed, and some site work is going on there. And then Building Number 3 is the furthest and closest to Cranberry Highway. So what we're here before you tonight is the, is basically Building Number 1. And the site plan was approved by the planning board with a larger building in the same exact location as Building Number 1. To include a drive-through for what would be a Starbucks in one of the larger leased spaces, and then an unknown, yet unknown tenant in the, in a second space, the drive-through lane is incorporated around the building, basically in the, in the previously approved footprint. So the building itself has been reduced in size to accommodate the area that we need for, for the drive-through. So someone using this drive-through would either enter from Cranberry Highway, come through the site to enter the drive-through here, or come through the Walmart entrance, come through this one-way, and also enter the same place. You'd place your order about halfway here through an intercom system, and then queue or drive up to the service window, which would be over here, and then exit the site. So essentially, essentially, it's, it's a very, very similar site plan. Smaller building, and incorporates the, the lanes needed for the drive-through.
Do you want to talk about some traffic?
Love to. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Again, for the record, Sean Kelly with Van Assen Associates and half the team. Thanks again for having us tonight. I know we've been down this, this road before. We've been involved with Van Assen Associates with this project a bit longer than, than I think the, the current team. We actually, with the traffic engineers, when Walmart initially came before this board about a decade ago, remember quite a few very warm nights in the basement downstairs. But again, just to orient ourselves, I think we all know the site. It's the out parcels of the Walmart project. The site has access today via a limited egress, full-access drive onto Route 28. There's also driveways onto Toby Road that serve the site. Back in February, we had done a, a full, comprehensive traffic study for the project that was approved by the planning board, and I know Derek walked through all the elements. The primary change since that project was approved, as he pointed out, was the reduction of one of the retail buildings, and about two-thirds of that building now accommodating Starbucks use. We updated our traffic study in a couple of ways, and again, the, the intersections that we looked at were consistent with what's been looked at as part of the other projects in the area, Wareham Marketplace, the gas station across the street, the Walmart itself. But basically, we looked at the signalized intersections at Toby and Toe and Wareham Crossing, the unsignalized driveways that serve the site in Wareham Crossing, and then also the Toby Road at Main Street intersection further to the south. We utilized the counts from the prior study for the evening and Saturday, which is typical. It's what you look at when you're doing a, a commercial study. But we also expanded it and included a morning analysis. And the reason we did that, as you can imagine, is that Starbucks' busiest time period is the morning peak hour, so we wanted to make sure that we captured that as part of our analysis. The volumes that we collected, consistent with our last study, we bumped up to account for everything else going on in the area. There's a number of projects. Again, the, the maxi gas station across the street's being expanded to a larger gas station with a, with a convenience store. When we had done our counts, some of the uses in Wareham Marketplace, including the Dollar General, the Wendy's, weren't in place yet, so we incorporated that traffic. And then we also, to provide for a comparison, included the development that was approved by the planning board, so we could compare the traffic impacts of the, the pure retail medical office, the Aspen Dental project, to the current project, which has the Aspen retail and the Starbucks. In the, as you can imagine, the, you know, the, the primary impact relative to the project is the increased traffic associated with, with Starbucks use. This, this basically just is a summary of the traffic that each of the different components generate, and as you can see, the, you know, the medical office is in the order of 10 to 15 trips an hour. Retail is in the order of, you know, 10 to 40, say. And the, the largest generator is, is the Starbucks use, which has about, you know, 200 trips in the morning, about 100 in the evening, and about 200 on a Saturday per hour. That's 100 in, 100 out, 50 in, 50 out. Not all the traffic associated with the Starbucks use is, is new, nor is, is there other retail uses new. A lot of the traffic that's generated by commercial uses, particularly when you're in a high-density commercial area such as this, next to Wareham Crossing, next to other retail that's proposed, next to the Walmart, you get a lot of pass-by traffic, and you get a lot of internal traffic. For coffee shops that provide a drive-through, the pass-by traffic is extremely high. The IT data shows it's anywhere from, you know, from 75 up to higher than 90% during peak hours. You know, people typically get their coffee when they're going to work, coming home from work, doing shopping. We went with a much more modest 50%, just to be conservative and create more new trips than we expect. Similarly, there's, there's internal trips where you have a multi-use, such as this, where we're gonna have a medical office building, the Walmart site, and another retail, where some of the trips associated with Starbucks are gonna be from customers and employees of those uses that actually stay within the project and don't, don't filter out onto the actual street. So when you factor all of that in, in terms of the actual new trips this project generates, it's about 100 trips in the morning, about 70 trips in the evening, and about 102 on a Saturday.
Is that, that's per hour?
That's per hour, correct, yeah. So it's about, about a car in and out, new car in and out every minute during the evening and more, rather, the morning and Saturday, and about one every other minute during the evening. Not all of these trips are coming from the same area. They're, they're spread out. Some come Route 28 from the north, but most of it's Route 28 from the south towards the interchange, and then there's even a lower percentage off of Main Street via Toby Road. So these increases actually will never be experienced on any one given segment of the corridor. They're dispersed to multiple areas. We've looked at the delta just to get a handle as to what the, the change is expected versus what was approved, so, and I won't go through every single number, but this is the project that was approved by the planning board back in, in the spring of this year. Here's the current project. And as you see, the, the major increase in terms of total trips is, is that morning peak hour where you're at 167 more. And then that makes sense, you know, where retail use really at, you know, 7:00 or 8:00 in the morning isn't gonna do a whole lot of traffic. A Starbucks, you're gonna be picking up a lot of traffic, because people go down 28, grab their coffee, and jump on 195, or conversely, get off of 195 and grab their coffee on their way to work. But when you take out the, the internal trip-making, the pass-by trip-making, et cetera, what it shows is that, again, that the real impact still is in that morning peak hour, where we're showing 81 total trips more versus what was approved by planning board. The evening is a lot lower, you know, 20 trips, and then Saturday, again, is about 48. forty-eight. So, really, the biggest impact this project is gonna have is during the morning peak. The good thing is the volumes in the morning peak are, as I'm sure you all are aware from living and driving around town, are substantially lower than they are during the evening peak. The Toby and Cranberry intersection carries about fifteen-hundred cars an hour in the morning under the build condition, and then, you know, on the midday and Saturday, it's in the...rather, evening and Saturday, it's in the two-thousand, twenty-two-hundred range. So, even with the Starbucks in place during that morning peak hour, traffic is still gonna be about a third to thirty percent less than what you see out there in the evening and then on a Saturday. The recommendations that we've made, you know, are really, and many of these are similar to what was raised as concerns at the planning board level. And there was a lot of focus, and Mr. Rowley certainly gave his input on this as well, was that we want to, you know, clean up the circulation, try to avoid as many conflicts as we can at the main drive into the site from Toby Road. So, to that end, the plan was to make this a one-way entrance drive. And the reason for this is that we didn't wanna have cars coming out here as cars are coming in from Toby Road and have a...have kind of a conflict pinch point here. So, this site's been designed so that everything flows into the site one-way and then kind of forces you out. Ultimately, the goal is to get you to go with the Route 28 driveway. The other primary focus as far as this specific site plan was looking at the ability to queue cars. We've been able to design a drive-through lane that really, you know, wraps around the entire building and can hold about eight cars before you, you know, you fill up the whole lane, which is...which accommodates your typical peak for a Starbucks during those busy hours. There will be some times that you might have a car or two that spills over, but there's, you know, adequate storage room in this area before it starts to create any, you know, issues in terms of conflicts or onsite circulation. So, really, you know, in comparison to what was already approved, that our recommendation really is to adhere to the same circulation plans, provide the appropriate storage, and then really design the site in such a way that we're trying to promote the use of the Route 28 driveway as the primary access point for vehicles destined to these uses. You know, we're trying to...I mean, the Walmart traffic certainly is gonna use this driveway, but during peak hours, what we feel is that ultimately, if the traffic is directed towards this exit...
The exit traffic.
Exit and traffic, right. And even entering, you can make a left into this driveway and you can make a right in, you just can't make a left out. So, the only traffic from the Starbucks use that would need to go back out to the signal are the ones destined for 28 northbound. If you're heading towards the interchange, which is the bulk of it, you don't need to go out this driveway. You can come out directly to 28. If you're heading onto Main Street, obviously, you would use this driveway here. But, really, the goal is to really establish this driveway as the primary access and really accommodate most of the egress as well for not just the Starbucks, but for the other uses. And that's, you know, really sums up the study in a nutshell. I mean, the primary impact of this will be during the morning peak, and there certainly will be a significant increase in traffic versus what was approved at planning board. But, the flip side is that the morning volumes are much lower and the impacts, you know, are certainly manageable and don't have a real degradation on operations during that peak hour. That's really all I have.
A couple of other notes that cross both of those boundaries. Under the two prior site plans that have been approved for this site, the scale of this development, which is now down with these changes to about fourteen thousand square feet, is significantly smaller than what the town has previously approved, which then carries through to significantly reducing the previously approved potential traffic. And I believe one of the two prior approved iterations had contemplated a drive-through as well. Though, obviously, they would've still needed relief from this board, but it had at least gone through the site plan approval phase with that being contemplated. In particular, unique to this site, if you looked at the lot configuration by Building One, this has kind of a unique lot shape in that there's this carve-out piece that wasn't included in the Walmart conveyance that limits the amount of parking that can be really directly adjacent to that building to allow for, you know, quick-service parking, if you will, for this type of use. Though, even if it did have additional parking directly by Building One, based on Starbucks and similar users, current building programs, they won't go anywhere without a drive-through at this point in their development cycle. Our client has been marketing this since they initially had site control. This is the first and only potential user that they've been able to get to a point of potential lease execution without the granting. Obviously, they'll lose the opportunity. We're trying to get this site finally, once and for all, developed. So, there's a financial hardship aspect to it, as well as kind of a unique lot shape that influences the available parking without a drive-through.
Okay. That's good. I'm gonna start by with Robert. Robert, what do you got for questions or ideas?
I have two concerns. My first concern is the amount of cars. You said approximately eight cars before it really fills up.
Right.
I find that somewhat underestimating at that point there on any given day. And just clarify for me, please, your exit point. How are they gonna get out of there again?
Oh, sure. Well, they won't be able to filter out where they came in. So, in other words, when you leave the drive-through area, you won't be able to make that U-turn move and come out here. This is gonna be clearly signed one-way, do-not-enter, stop-control. So, they can either, you know, make their way around the building again and come up through the, you know, the main circulation aisle and work their way down here, or they can meander through the site itself and go that way. But, in any event, where the goal is to kind of force them towards that exit. So, and we recommend at the planning board level to have signage as well that directs people, if you're to I-95, to Route 28 southbound. Because what we...what's happening today, and I think, quite frankly, as the Wendy's just opened today next door, I was actually...had my first burger there. But, this intersection, because of the volumes across the way being so low, where the site wasn't fully developed and all you had was the Aldi and a mattress store, it's become more convenient to come out of here and make this maneuver. But, as the friction between these two approaches, you know, reaches a higher density, if you will, as this driveway gets more utilized, what we feel is that, you know, the idea, the initial intent when Walmart went through the initial permitting, was that people that are heading southbound on 28 are gonna find it more convenient to make that right-hand turn where they just need to find a gap in traffic in one direction and then make a through move in southbound. So, the intent of the design is to not let people come back out of this drive, but really to force them and push them and guide them towards the other driveway. And that's the intent.
Looking at this, again, like I said, my concern is the amount of traffic that could be backed up back right out onto Toby Road on any given day, on a very busy day.
Sure.
In that area, especially this time of the year.
Right.
I think eight cars is somewhat a small amount.
How would we back all the way out to Toby Road?
Then, you would...to get...if, I mean, it's...you could do about eight through here and then typically the most you'll ever see at a Starbucks is, you know, and this is your busiest two minutes out of your morning peak hour, is you might see, you know, ten, eleven, even twelve is probably the most. And that would essentially come across the frontage, but it still wouldn't limit the ability to come into the site. To get from the end of the drive-through all the way around the building to here, then back up into here, back around the bend, down to here, I mean, we're gonna...we're talking about, I'm gonna guess it's a twenty to twenty-five car queue. It certainly would be a larger queue than I've ever seen at any Starbucks, and we do a lot of monitoring Starbucks, really any fast-food restaurant in general, to be frank.
And just to follow up on that, from the data that you've had on other projects, there is a, call it either a parking or a no-go kind of point as well. Once it's fully backed up, people either get frustrated and say, "I'm not gonna wait in that," or they choose the option of pulling into a parking spot and actually, you know, physically going in. So, there's, you know, we are constrained on the site as far as how many cars can realistically queue. And then, to some degree, there's a kind of a common sense factor that hopefully people will back up further. Just one other point, he had mentioned the Wendy's opening today. Two things on that. One is the peak hours for the Wendy's drive-through, you know, are...they fit well with this being a morning-driven traffic generator, and they are by far more of a drive, midday drive in evening. But, also, just the granting of the relief. The Wendy's is also a strip commercial zone, and this board had granted the use variance there. So, our request is consistent with the actions of the board, even within the last year or so.
Good. Varank.
I have concerns about this being a drive-through restaurant. I already have current concerns about that intersection that comes out of Walmart. I wasn't on the board when that variance was granted for Wendy's. Right now, my answer would be no. And the reason is because I find the intersection confusing as it is. I think one of two things would need to be done for me to go forward with it, and it would either have a median on Toby so that you can't go across from both sides at that intersection coming out of there, or it was only one way out of that parking lot, and that would be out onto 28 if you wanted to go left out of the parking lot. So, nobody could take a left out of that and go across, which is virtually like three or four lanes, is not well-marked, everybody's coming from every direction. To allow a drive-through here, I couldn't do it in good conscience. I think you're gonna end up with accidents already. I think that's gonna happen.
If I could just...I won't...when this project went through the initial permitting for Walmart and then really the subsequent permitting with Wareham Marketplace and the other projects, you know, we worked closely with their traffic consultants with Mast DOT towards this plan. Putting a median in on Toby Road, what that would effectively do is you wouldn't be able to get out of this site and head north. If you lived anywhere on Route 28 to the north of here, you effectively wouldn't be able to get out of the site. Because DOT doesn't allow a left out of this location, and they made it clear that they're not gonna allow that. One of the access management goals for DOT on Route 28 is to eliminate left turns that are uncontrolled along the corridor. We just did the gas station across the street, Maxi Gas, and they actually won't have any driveways on 28 that allow them to make left turns either in or out. It's all gonna be right-in, right-out. They want the left-hand turn movements to occur at the signal because it's a safer condition. So, if you were to have a median on Toby Road the entire length, what that would mean is that anyone in the site, not just the Starbucks-related, but even Walmart, you wouldn't be able to make that left, and you can't make a left there. So, effectively, you can't go north on 28. What you'd have is you'd have people making, probably making a right-hand turn, you know, going down to the liquor store, doing a U-turn in their parking lot, or, you know, driving straight...well, actually, you wouldn't be able to go straight across. But, what you would do is just create a bunch of circuitous U-turn maneuvers at other private properties to get where you need to go. But, ultimately, you know, the left out of here, you know, it was a strong consideration, and there was a lot of background to it. You know, this intersection, prior to Walmart coming in, was, you know, I don't like to use the word disaster, but it was a disaster. There was...there was a high crash rate, there was misaligned...Toby Road and Toe Road were offset by a couple of lanes. You couldn't even run the signal in an operational way that made sense because the offset was so bad. The islands at this location didn't really delineate traffic and guide you onto Toby Road or off. It was a mess. And only through the beatens, the cranberry growers working with Walmart, working with their traffic engineer, our traffic...we served as the traffic engineer, the town's traffic engineer, and Mast DOT's traffic engineer was that intersection improved to the level it is. So, you know, I just don't, you know, a lot...I guess, long story short, is that a lot of people at the state level, local level, the town's own consultant, you know, had their input, and that's how we got to where we are. And there really isn't a...the measures, including putting a median, just wouldn't fix any problems. In fact, it would likely exacerbate it.
I would think that trips going just to that Starbucks would end up generating a ton of people coming all the way back around and going out on Toby Road. Makes just as much sense for them to get...head out and go...
Onto 28.
Onto 28, yeah.
No, and I think that is what you're likely you're gonna see, is a lot of, particularly the pass-by trips. If you're coming southbound on 28 and you jump on 195 as your major commuter route, I think a lot of the trips will be people making that free right-in, you know, going in, getting their coffee, and then coming back out.
Coming right back out, yeah.
And then back out, you know?
Yeah.
And really, that's, you know, when we did the initial planning and design for the Walmart and these associated parcels, it was certainly intended that this drive would be utilized a lot more than it is today when they do monitoring reports every year for the Walmart, they submit them to DOT to look at how the traffic flows. And right now, this drive, I wanna say it's only accommodating, you know, five to ten percent of the traffic associated with the project, and that was never the intent. So, again, through the design, the circulation, the one-way flows and the signage, the idea is to get that traffic over here and really make this become almost a secondary access for these uses. And really, the only reason you would need to come out this way is if you want to make that left on the 28 northbound, and that's the only viable way to do so.
So, if I might make a point here, I think taking a left out of that development would be better going across one lane than several, which is what is at this entrance. Simply going down to the next entrance and taking the left would be a lot smoother than doing it here. Doesn't...if you didn't put a median and you just change where the exit out of there, if you wanna go in that direction...
Comes from the other side.
Part of the issue with that is that that isn't located on our site and we have control over that. That's something that Walmart would have to sign on for, and it's unlikely that they'll restrict one of the two means of ingress egress to just accommodate.
That other driveway that's located further away from the signal is a very shallow driveway.
Is that driveway the one that goes in essentially right in front of Walmart?
That's the next driveway down.
The next...oh, I see, I see.
So, this driveway has some depth.
Yeah, yep, 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 yeah.
That next driveway down is a really shallow drive because you're right in the vicinity of the building. So, if you get any kind of queue in there, if you were to shift all that traffic...
Yeah.
You're gonna gum that up. And then, it's gonna create a situation where you've got, you know, a gridlock at the driveway, you know?
It's also gonna funnel all the people trying to go out of Toby Road in that direction right in front of Walmart trying...I mean, at least here, it's dispersed.
And it wouldn't just, again, it wouldn't just be Starbucks traffic. It would be the multiple hundreds of cars an hour that leave Walmart everywhere.
Right.
So, it's...
If I may, Charlie, did you have a chance to look at these plans?
I knew it was coming in. I haven't seen the plans at all.
Yep.
What was it you said, a total of this, eighty trips more a day than...
Per hour.
A hundred trips per hour in the morning, seventy in the evening, and one oh-two on the weekend.
Yeah. And really, when you talk about the new trips, yeah, it's about eighty, twenty, and fifty ballpark.
Right.
Yep, that's in and out.
Over and above what you originally...
What is currently proposed. It could get built.
Okay, yeah.
Great.
Eighty-one, twenty, and forty-eight?
Well, keep in mind the morning traffic. It's not much impact because nobody goes to Walmart eight in the morning and/or the dental place, I would say. But, I personally suggest have Charlie look at the plans. I personally don't have a problem with it. I would like to put the whole site to rest, and maybe we'll have Charlie look at the details for drainage, things like this. But, on a point of view of variance, I don't have a problem. And that should've been passed to town meeting. I guess that was a mistake. They passed it for a different zone, I think for...
I don't know.
Commercial.
I'm hearing...
You said a strip commercial?
I'm hearing a couple of things that I...either I don't understand or there's an error. You called it strip commercial. I thought that was planned commercial.
No, this is in the strip commercial CES zone.
Okay, okay. My, you know, and...
We had had some discussion with Ken. I guess there had been a year and a half ago or so, a amendment to the zoning bylaw...
Right.
To make it by special permit instead of, you know, needing a variance. But, for whatever reason, the actual article that got moved only had that applied to the commercial general...
Correct.
Instead of the strip. So...
Correct.
That's why, in part, I think we had even titled this special permit slash variance 'cause there had been a question about intent, though I think it fits variance.
It is a variance. It's a variance. Jake, do you have any question on it?
No questions.
How you feel about it, the variance part, not the technical matters?
I'm just ready to hear what Ken has to...I mean, Ken can say about everything before I say anything.
Okay, Jen.
Hi, I'm with you.
Okay, very good. Ken, do you have some comments?
Yeah, one of the things was this before did not need any zoning relief, so it went to the planning board for a site plan review, and they did the total review of the site, the drainage and the traffic and the development, the landscape, all the development details. I had assumed that it would be appropriate if they wanted to put a Starbucks in with a drive-through, that they come to the zoning board of appeals for relief first, and if granted, then go to the planning board for a modification of the site plan review. If the issues are traffic, and I think those are probably driven by the activity, the increase... increase in, in the number of trips associated with the drive-through, that you may want to have a, a traffic specialist review the traffic impact report. And, and leave the other aspects of the site plan to the planning board.
Yeah, if, if I, if I may.
Go ahead.
But once they come to variance, we become, we become granting authority for the site plan.
A site plan review has already been granted, though, by the planning board for the development.
Okay, so we're deciding just for a variance?
That's what, that's what I'm recommending.
Okay, so.
Along that line.
Yeah.
If the, if the planning board has already scrutinized the drainage and all that, why do we need to re-scrutinize it?
Yeah, that's what I was getting.
That's what I'm saying.
Oh.
And they will have to scrutinize the modification piece. The building size is changing, there's been some other changes that we were going to need to go back to them anyway. So, we had talked to Ken, who should go first, is it something that could be done jointly? And he had recommended, you know, come to you guys on the use issue and then go take back up the actual, you know, nuts and bolts with Charlie and the planning.
So, Charlie could, I guess, come and play his role with the planning board, they don't need us. Am I correct?
I'm not convinced that there wouldn't be some major changes to the, to the site plan due to the change in use. What was approved before was based on a certain traffic count and a certain type of small retail use for that small building.
Right, but if I, if I made Charlie, so I don't interrupt you. Either we don't decide plan or the variance.
I, I agree with Ken.
If it's gonna go to the planning board, let it be, argue at the planning board, there's no sense of us arguing if we're not gonna decide on it, correct?
All I'm, all I'm saying is that, in my view, that anything to do with the site plan itself should be left to the planning board because they have a special permit that they would have to modify. So, and I'm just speaking as, as one individual.
Right.
I think the four statutory requirements for variance would need to be met. And based on whatever your decision is with respect to that, then they could go back to the planning board and know that a variance for the use has been granted. But how that gets generated to something that's actually on the site would then be left to the planning board to decide. Because the traffic movements, the location of the building, modification of drainage maybe, and I, I think those are, are open enough that the planning board should have the opportunity to consider that. But the variance strictly, I agree with Ken, is your thing to deliberate.
Right, but what's the message on the law says? Are we, do we take over once a variance? Or I, I, I wouldn't respect your opinion, but I respect what the law says.
It's based on the, the local zoning bylaws as to who's on first, so to speak. It says in the site plan review under Article 15 that the, that the special permit granting authority is the planning board unless there's a zoning relief that's provided, in which case it's the zoning board of appeals that does the site plan review. In this case, however, since the planning board has already issued the special permit and the site plan review for the site, it makes sense that, that it's a more narrow look at what the board of appeals would do in terms of the zoning relief.
Not only that, but the way the special permit was issued, under the conditions, it requires us to go back to the planning board for any changes to the site plan. So, even if Ken had recommended that you guys comment on those issues, it wouldn't negate our need by decision.
Believe me, I don't wanna, I don't wanna comment on the site plan. I would like to act on a variance and don't get involved with the drainage or any of that.
That's how I read your, your bylaw as well.
Okay, so what's, what's the board feel? You guys feel like we just act on a variance and they go back to planning board, or somebody has a different idea?
Yes, I, I, I feel as though the, the, less is more.
Yeah, I mean, there's no sense us going through it and the planning board. Wouldn't you agree, Charlie?
I think that's the appropriate way to do it.
Yeah.
So, there's no sense both of us.
Planning board has sharp sticks and they can poke at them all they want. We don't need sharp sticks too.
We'd rather no one have too sharp of a stick.
But you are in a cage.
All right, anyone in the audience wanna speak in favor of this project? Anyone against? I don't know, what's the wishes of the board? Do you wanna move to closer?
I'd like to close the hearing and make a, a motion.
All right, well, let's make, do you wanna, do you wanna make anything, any comment before we close it?
No, we're, we're comfortable with that. I guess what we would ask would be if it were, if the use variance were granted, it would be subject to, you'd authorize Ken to work with us on the terms and conditions of the decision to be approved at your next meeting. And that way, we don't have to put a document in front of you to approve for something like that at this meeting.
I don't need, I don't need, we need any special terms and conditions, but.
Oh, you could discuss all you want with.
Generally, yeah, I mean.
We're either granting a variance or we're not. That's all we.
All right, is anyone wanna add anything before we close it? Okay.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, uh, second.
Second, all in favor to close, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, absent, so it's closed. Any discussion? Okay.
Make a motion to approve the plan as presented for a variance to allow a drive-through.
Okay, we have a motion by Jim to grant the variance. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Did I ask a question on that? That you're not approving the plan? That you're not approving the plan, only that you're granting a use variance for the site?
We just, exactly. That's, that's acceptable, yes. So, we're only granting a use variance, not the plan. Counselor, you're, you're, all right. So, we have a motion by Jim to, to grant the use variance, and we have a second by Jake. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, it's four, one, zero, four, oh, yeah, four, one, zero, it carries. Thank you. And you could talk all you want with, with Ken.
And this is forty-five nineteen, which one is this? High Point. You guys got anything to do with our life, High Point?
Forty-five nineteen.
What is it?
No, never mind, it's a bad joke.
I, I get it now, yes. No, we don't. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Four, one.
Ken and Charlie will be in touch about the planning board phase.
That's you and them.
I think they're not meeting until January, probably.
Yeah, I know. January thirteenth, we know. Tough time of the year for everybody.
We get something to sign, yeah, we do. So, I got a question, what's the green, well, it's closed, heck, it doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter.
What's the green up above? Is that something that they own and it's just gonna be?
Yeah, it's, it's part of the lot, so.
And so they're just gonna leave it as?
And it's weapons, so it's just, yeah, maybe that's the lot, but the weapons.
And, and that over there, that parking lot's already created.
This parking lot's already built.
So, this is it. That's, that's done, it's built out.
Yeah, it's built out.
With those three structures, done.
Nothing can go here.
Yep. That's, that's, yeah. I, I just wanted.
This area here sort of.
Application met statute of variance. MGL ten.
I got it.
Yeah, ten is variance.
All right, let me pass it.
Veronica's right. Yep, I got it. They'd improve the case.
Can you keep this?
You need to sign and put denied behind your name. Finder, whatever.
That's for me.
Are we doing the mending fees next, or are we getting a couple of people in the?
I thought we already did that.
Can we, can we, can we bypass the fee thing and get to these people that are sitting here patiently waiting?
When amended, application fee, that's stable, that's to the end. All right, continued public hearing, twenty-nineteen Coastal Cultivars, zero Patterson Brook Road for a special permit.
Who needs to sign? Jan and Jake?
Do you mind, Ken, press this? All right, I believe this, this public hearing has been opened, so just you name an address for the record and we'll carry, we'll continue.
Good evening, Chair, members of the board. For the record, I'm Attorney Donald Nagel. I represent Coastal Cultivars for this project for a special permit site plan review, application twenty-nineteen. With me is Ben Smith, the founder of Coastal Cultivars, and Jared Glennon, a partner, is back there in the audience, and also Brian Grady from GAF Engineering.
Okay, just wanna brief us, who's gonna brief us?
Sure, sure. First, I just wanna apologize, we just finished putting together the final touches on the site plan and a, a full submittal package. So, I apologize that we don't have that copies for you tonight, but we'll be submitting them tomorrow. But I would like to give you an overview of the project, and then I'll turn it over to Ben, and then to Brian to walk through the actual site plan. So, this project is a proposal to cultivate and manufacture marijuana products in an existing industrial park located on Patterson Road, identified as on Assessor's Map eighty-nine, and a lot now currently identified as lot one-zero-zero-seven-a. And that's a fourteen-and-a-half acre parcel. This use is identified as a marijuana establishment under the Section 390 of the, of the bylaw. And under the table of uses, it's allowed in an industrial district, which this is, with a special permit issued by the ZBA.
Could I interrupt you just one second?
Please.
For, just for a point of clarification, is this the building formerly known as Navionics?
No, not this.
No, it's not.
Okay.
The site is, is an undeveloped wooded lot right now. It's really the last lot.
On the left, across from the orthopedic surgeon?
Behind Wallica. You go down Wallica.
Oh, 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 come on, I'm in the wrong park.
Yeah, right, right. The entrance is right by the coffee.
Okay, you're going in by Wallica, by the moving company, and then we're going down to the end.
Exactly.
And we're going straight in all the way to the dead end?
Straight in, and there's a current approved subdivision plan that will go in, it'll create about a hundred-and-twenty-five feet of frontage, and it'll end in the cul-de-sac.
You're gonna build new road going forward there.
That's right.
Okay, I'll.
And that's all been approved.
The last building on the right right now is condominium industrial building, the seven.
Exactly, and the prominent tenant is Jim's Coffee.
Glad I asked.
Yeah, okay.
Now I'm in the right church. Now all I gotta do is hit the right pew.
Just for clarification as well, this is no retail, it's just cultivation.
Growing on.
The one, the one of Yonex, it's, it's, right.
That's, that is correct. It's, so the, yeah, the use is growing and, and manufacturing. So, the, the property is, as I said, about fourteen-and-a-half acres. The, the grow area is up to a hundred thousand square feet of, for outdoor plant cultivation.
Outdoor?
Outdoor, yeah. And also, there'll be a processing building, which is about twenty thousand square feet.
Do you have site plan? Do you have plans?
We have a site plan.
Yeah, I'll go through this.
Brian will go through.
Oh, we don't have copies?
No, we're just finishing it up today, we apologize for that. I know we've had several continuances, so I wanted to come in and give you like the thumbnail sketch tonight.
Sure, because we don't have nothing enough.
That's right, and we do have a site plan that we'll walk you through tonight.
Okay.
And tomorrow, we'll provide a full package to all members.
All right.
To each member.
So.
So, but the bottom line is, it's an outdoor grow facility, up to ten, a hundred thousand square feet on a fourteen-and-a-half acre parcel. Currently, the parcel is completely wooded, undeveloped area. We'll be clearing, it's all pine trees. We'll be clearing the pine trees, and Brian will go, go over the plan with you. And then there's a processing building that's about twenty thousand square feet. So, that's just the, you know, the tip, you know, the highlights for details. Brian, we'll go through the site plan with you. But I'd also like to introduce Ben to have him tell you, tell you a little about himself and his company and the experience that he's had with this kind of operation.
So.
Good evening, thanks for taking this honor. You hear me?
Yeah.
Thanks for taking the time. My name is Ben Smith, I'm one of the founders of Coastal Cultivars, along with Jared Glennon and Pepe Berton, who is the majority owner of the, the company. Mr. Berton operates Uflora, which is a Colorado-based cannabis company. He's engaged in all aspects of cannabis, from manufacturing, cultivating, retailing. He has been operational since 2009. He actually received one of the first medical licenses in Colorado, and also received one of the first adult use licenses in Colorado. In this timeframe, he has operated without issues as far as security, diversion. He has not been fined or had any citations from the MED, which is the governing body in Colorado. We have the CCC here, it's similar to that. Jared and I reached out to him just because we knew of his track record, how long he's been doing it, how well he's doing, how well he's been doing it, and the experience he can bring to the local community. I met him through, I've been a cannabis consultant now for the last four years. I worked on many projects. I actually worked on a project here in town with Ken that started about a year and a half ago on the organic project. This project has been a little while in the making, and it's a project that I will actually be an owner in. And it's an agricultural project that I've been dreaming about doing for a long time, so I'm looking to create a partnership with the town, be a good corporate citizen, make this work. It's a site that I'd probably be on every day that it's open.
Okay, Brian?
All right, thank you. Brian Grady with GAF Engineering. Let me just give you a quick rundown of, of the site plan and the location. This is the industrial subdivision, Patterson Brook Road, Wallica is out in front. So, where this site is located is if you go down Patterson, you go all the way to the end, that's where the, you'll find the cul-de-sac. And on the left is some industrial condominiums owned by McCarthy. On the right is a smaller industrial building, ten units, I believe, five of them are owned by Jim's Organic Coffee. And there's a fire and ventilation company in there, SMH Electronics. So, what has happened prior to this, we've gone to the planning board, received Form C approval for the subdivision, reviewed by the planning board and by Mr. Oly. What that will do is it extends the cul-de-sac approximately a hundred-and-twenty-five feet into the site, which is how we get our frontage for the development. There's been a subdivision approved on this property for a number of years yet, it's never been built. So, this is the current plan, we've modified that. So, we have those approvals in place for the, for the subdivision. So, this will push the road in to a currently undeveloped site to create the frontage. And then, once you get into the site, you can see at the top of the page, this is the cul-de-sac that has been approved by the planning board. The driveway, straight entry off the cul-de-sac into the site, left-hand turn to get over to the development. Parking area located in front of the building. This is the twenty thousand square foot processing building. We're proposing a gravel fire access, emergency access around the entire building. And then what you see, these large boxes to the south, those are proposed greenhouses and the outdoor cultivation facility. The maximum license you can get through the CCC right now is the hundred thousand, so that's why that figure is out there. So, we'll have probably maybe ninety-five thousand square feet is what's proposed in the greenhouses, they want to allow a little bit. They might have an indoor grow component, you know, for winter and things like that. So, that's why we're at those figures. The greenhouses will be on a crushed stone base, we'll remove unsuitable soils down to the sand, the site. to the sand, the sites are very well drained, put down a crushed stone, put down a fabric, put down a crushed stone base for the greenhouses, and those greenhouses will be constructed on that. They'll be entirely enclosed within an eight-foot chain link fence. Those fences will have cameras, motion detectors, lighting, significant security that meets CCC standards and will exceed CCC standards. All those cameras will be linked to a security room inside the facility, where security personnel will be there 24/7/365. Right now, the anticipation, as the chairman pointed out, there's no retail component as part of this, it's just cultivation and processing. So the only people entering the site will be employees, vendors, delivery personnel, things like that. We're anticipating approximately 25 people on the maximum shift. On average, that will grow to 50 employees on site when it gets to peak grow, the several months of the year during the grow season and the harvest season. So there's a seasonal need for employees, which we expect to max out at about 50, and that grow period runs from mid-May to November at some point. So that's the project in a nutshell. We will provide the package to you folks tomorrow. There is a 53G account established already, so we'll get those plans, or Ken can get those plans out to the review engineer for comment. So that's it. I know you folks are familiar with marijuana processing facilities, retail facilities, there's been several projects before you in town. This has an outdoor grow component, which is probably new to you. I know there was a conference call yesterday with Ben and Ken and some other folks with the only other outdoor grow facility in Massachusetts, and what their short history has been regarding that. So.
Yeah, I'm assuming Ken will pass the plans to Fire Department for recommendation?
Yes.
Planning, do you have to go to conservation?
An RDA will need to be filed as part of the site plan. There are no, there are wetlands on the site, you'll see just to the extreme west, there's a stream with associated wetlands. No activities proposed within the 100-foot buffer or the 200-foot riverfront area, but we will be filing an RDA with conservation.
Okay, go ahead.
So, I don't, maybe I'm just being a little thick. Is a greenhouse considered outdoor cultivation?
Well, the thought is to grow it outdoors. The greenhouses will be used if necessary. You know, if you get an extreme wind event or something like that that could damage the crop, then the greenhouse will be utilized. They can go up pretty quickly, is the way they're constructed. So the first season, the plan will be to grow it entirely outdoor, not within the greenhouses, if not necessary. The second season, you move towards greenhouses, which would expand the grow season. But the primary reason for the outdoor grow is minimize costs and minimize impacts. Indoor grow, as you know, utilize a lot of energy. It increases lighting, heating, ventilation, your mechanicals, your outdoor mechanical equipment is much more significant. So it takes advantage of mother nature, it just becomes agriculture utilizing sunlight, natural rainfall.
So, even though I'm hearing the word greenhouse in this presentation, during at least the first year, there won't be any greenhouses on the site? Or initially, maybe I won't. I don't want you to feel like I'm restricting you to a year, I didn't mean it that way. Your first seeds are gonna be planted outdoors?
Correct. And greenhouse, we're talking high tunnels, so hoop houses, which, you know, some roll and whatnot, and so the tops can go off and on easily. It's not a rigid structure like a gutter-connected greenhouse with foundations and whatnot. Ideally, we, you know, probably move towards those to extend the growing season, because right now it's a monocrop, it's traditional farming, so we'll have the one crop, and we bring it in, process it, and they'll be done for the season.
You grow a crop, you'll sell it, you'll use the money to buy greenhouses, and you'll grow a bigger crop.
Right.
Exactly.
And these plants, each plant is in its, in an individual pot, and these aren't put into the ground. They're in an individual pot, and they'll be supplemented with drip irrigation. You're not gonna have large spray irrigations like cornfields or anything like that.
How big the greenhouses will be?
Well, what we're showing here is several that fit into, you see one of the property lines is at an angle, so there are varying sizes.
Total square footage roughly?
What we're showing here is about 95,000. Again, we're allowing a little bit for an indoor grow component, so right here about a 95,000.
If you do greenhouses, you know you're gonna have a big impact for drainage.
Yes, we're accounting for all of that.
We're counting for that?
We're counting the greenhouse as an impermeable roof in the drainage calculations, yes.
The greenhouse itself, what happens when you put up plastic, what are you gonna do with drainage?
Yeah, we're counting that as an impermeable roof, as it were, as if it were a permanent building.
Okay, all right.
So, one, two, three, four rectangles, so to speak, two of the same size, and then two progressively smaller, those would be four greenhouses.
Well, what's going on here is, you see the dashed lines in between?
Yeah.
So the tunnel house, the greenhouse, it's 28 feet wide, and you can vary the length to be whatever you want.
Yeah.
So those are four tunnels wide, and they're just butt up to each other, so you have the hoop, and the hoop, and the hoop, and the hoop. And you can make it however long you need.
Four, eight, sixteen, 24, something like that, it's 24 hoop houses, not four.
Correct. And they just butt them up.
I'm getting the picture now.
Yeah, and they just butt them up for one footprint. The final configuration, they may deem it needs to change, they might need some more spacing, so we've got to know it off to the side, you know.
And 100,000 feet is like, less than 20% of 14 acres.
Right.
And so that triangle has got to, is a lot, I'm just trying to get the picture in my head, that's all.
Yeah.
And the building out front, that's gonna be a steel building?
Yeah, there's.
The manufacturing?
Manufacturing, yes.
Ah, okay, thank you.
So it'll have a masonry veneer front?
Yeah, I know, we get this new, in my opinion, ridiculous rule that says you can't have steel buildings in an industrial park, but.
Anyway, so you're gonna figure in your storm auto management, the greenhouse is right, for review?
Yes, that's, so we're all treating that as impervious, and all that will be provided to the review engineer, yes.
Okay, we start by Robert. Robert, what do you have?
Veronica. I don't have any questions, but are you going before a board tomorrow night? You keep mentioning that you're gonna give the plans tomorrow night.
No, we're just gonna submit the package to Ken tomorrow, and he can disperse them to the appropriate.
Well, apparently, we're not gonna act on it tonight until we have reviewed by Charlie, look at the plans and stuff. So Jim, what you thought?
I'm good, I've got all my questions answered.
No questions?
None right now.
Anyone in the audience wanna speak in favor of this project? Against? None? So I guess, Ken, do you have any comments before we continue this? Well, apparently, we're gonna have to wait for your plans, the faster you submit them, the faster the review is, and so we can listen from Charlie. Do you wanna comment anything for them to prepare?
No.
All right, that being said, I guess, what's the deadline on that we have to act? What's the date? Oh, we get time on that one.
So when you submit the plans, are you gonna give them to them in hard copy or in digital copy?
Well, we'll give the prints and everything, if you need PDFs, we'll provide those as well, yep.
If you could just forward PDFs, then we can.
Sure, yep.
I don't know if we will, but at least we could.
Probably a good idea, yeah. All right, if anybody don't have a question, we'd like to move to continue this.
Still moved.
All right, on the 25th, there's no hearing, apparently, so there'll be January 8. So we have a motion to continue 20-19 till January 8. Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
All right.
Opposed, send. See you then, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we get too deep, don't forget I recuse myself on this one, so you wanna name an alternate?
Right. Well, in this matter, I guess Robert will vote for the seat for Jim, because Jim has a conflict, has to recuse himself.
Good evening, Board. Thank you for the continuance and patience.
Yeah, I know, it's been a while.
Yes, it is.
I guess the public hearing is open, so we'll just name an address for the record and we'll proceed.
Anthony Grasso, five Toplin Way, Rehaim, Mass.
I'm Tom Morris, I work with Outback Engineering, 165 East Grove Street in Middleborough.
Okay. Wanna just refresh our memory on it, and where we at?
This request for a variance and special permit for a 21 car, used car license.
Right, if.
In conjunction with a three-bedroom house.
Right, for just Veronica, what do you hear when we opened that hearing?
I remember this.
You remember this?
I can't recall. This is in West Rehaim, right?
Right.
Yes, right across from the courthouse.
Yeah, the courthouse, yeah.
I don't remember if I was here or not.
When was the very first hearing, remember?
A while ago. About a year ago.
Was it a year?
Yeah.
In 2018?
It was July 11th, 2018.
It's possible that I wasn't there.
All right. Can you, now, let me ask you a question, we opened and closed it, or did we hear any argument on it?
We never closed it.
I mean, sorry, did we open and continued?
You opened and continued.
That's it?
Yes.
The only thing that's ever been done is a continuance.
All right. You're okay, Jen, you can sit on it.
Yeah?
Jen could sit on it, if there was no discussion. All right, so let's hear the whole, the whole plan. Do you wanna present the plan?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
So the existing site is an existing single-family home, a three-bedroom home, accessed off the private way of Ray Ave. It is an existing gravel road, and the entrance has actually been improved with recycled asphalt, has been cleaned up. Some of the vegetation in the strip here has been cleaned out so that there's no sightline issues with coming out onto Cranberry Highway. Previously, it was fairly overgrown. So what the proposed use is, is a used car lot, but we are going to retain the existing three-bedroom home and only use a small portion, which is the existing breezeway garage and carport, as the business. So that's just closing off a wall interior to separate the spaces. So the reason we have to come before you for this is two special permits. One is requested for the use of the motor vehicle sales, which is allowed with a special permit from ZBA. The second special permit is for multiple principal uses, the car lot and the single-family We are also asking for one variance to eliminate a 24-inch landscape berm along the front property line.
24 inch or 24 feet?
24 inch, high.
Oh, okay.
24 inch high. From how I interpret it, this is intended to screen a parking lot of, say, a business where just employees are gonna be parking there, and no one wants to be looking at those cars. We're asking for the variance because obviously, selling cars, you want people to see them. So you don't want to completely screen them, and people won't be able to.
So you wanna do landscape and undertow feet?
Yeah, so we will be putting, we're proposing landscaping along the front, but we're not gonna be putting it up on a berm, which will visually screen the cars.
Okay, did you, did you, do you have a, I didn't go through the plans, do you have a landscaping engineer sign the plan?
Yes.
You have one, okay. So continue, well, I'm looking, you can continue with this.
I mean, that's the basics of it, but we have, we've gone back and forth with Mr. Rowley a couple times, made some edits. I know one thing that he still recommends is that it is paved, the parking lot that we're proposing. Right now, we are proposing to do a recycled asphalt, compacted recycled asphalt surface, which would match the existing surface on Ray Ave. I know Mr. Rowley's concerns include durability of the surface. We believe, based on the limited traffic that would come into such a small used car lot, and the low rate of travel, as there's really nowhere you're driving, it's just you're coming right into park. We're not really concerned about the durability.
I did read Mr. Rowley's comment, when he sent them, I think about 10 days ago, and that's, that's the thing that stuck out on my mind, the paving. We'll hear what the board says. I think it's very important, like, say you have a handicapped person, how is he gonna go with his chair, or walk, an older gentleman or lady wants to go look at cars, or plowing? I understand if you have five, six cars for sale, but you have 21-plus parking lots and stuff, but, so that's, I know you don't have a lot of traffic, that I understand, but that's, that's a big parking lot. I forget what Mr. Rowley said about the drainage, if he's okay with it, like I said, I read it 10 days ago, I forgot to bring it with me, and.
Yeah, I believe.
I don't know if somebody has it here, Ken, you don't have that letter, but.
I believe he said that the changes that we made were adequate.
Yeah, yeah, so I did read, like I said, it's been 10 days, been so busy, I forgot it, but the only thing that really still sticks in my mind, the paving. I'm gonna pass it to the board and see what they say, what they think, we start by Robert.
The existing house itself is, that's not gonna be used for anything?
It's a rental property.
Right. It's gonna remain a single-family home that will be rental, and it'll just have.
It'll be rented?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. It's substantial, cordon off, there's fencing in between the car lot and the house.
Okay.
Numerous vegetation and plantings. One of the things, I've kept it really low-key, as far as what we ran into, is there was no photo metrics available for the lighting, because I don't want it to be some big, you know, lights up high or.
Understood.
Yeah, I want it to remain, if I can show you the picture, I'll put it in front here, and you can. Pretty much, there's no changes in the dimensions of the car, perhaps.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Basically, this is from Ray Ave, and you're looking at it, and this is front of the street.
Okay, yep.
The only thing I'm adding is different windows, cupola, with steering wheel in it. My name is Kamguk, and I'm keeping that. And up front, there's gonna be a small stone wall, only three feet high. And up front, there's going to be a small stone wall, only three feet high. And it's gonna have Ray Avenue and my name on it. Other than that, it's basically gonna remain more of a nautilus theme. So it's Kamguk and Morris.
Okay. The other question I have is on, what will you be doing there as far as the cars are concerned? As far as detailing or mechanic work?
There's no maintenance of the vehicles there. They'll have to be sublet.
Okay. I'm good. Thank you.
All right. Let me, I want to go back to that, to that berm. I just, Dawn, on me, I do understand what they did that berm at Dollar's, what is it? In Eastway, across from Bay.
Dollar General.
Dollar General. That berm, personally, I think that's a crazy berm. I mean, I could see why they, whoever came with this idea, making a two-feet berm.
Don't know the history of it. It's in the bylaw.
I, I understand shrubs, but not a berm. But so personally, personally, I do agree, berm not a good idea, landscaping. I would rather see landscaping, shrubs, flowers more than a berm. Personally, we'll see what the board says.
Over two hundred plantings.
We, we will go through the planting after. So but personally, I'm okay to get rid of the berm. Now I understand what you're saying. Veronica, what do you want to say?
My first thought was the berm. And I'm inclined to say if it's in the bylaw and there's no hardship not to put it, I don't know how we could say you don't have to put it. And I think whatever the board decides to, to, to do, I would like to see something in the front. Twenty-four inches isn't going to hide a vehicle. I think it would just make the area look nice.
Yeah, the only problem is the site does drop off from Cranberry Highway. So if you.
Do you have any photographs?
Do you understand, Veronica, what you're talking about, berm?
They have to raise it twenty-four inches and then put plantings?
No, yeah.
Yeah, it would be plantings on top of the berm is what's required.
This is from the courthouse view, or Southern Eleven, actually. And that's the front of Cranberry Avenue.
So all these trees?
I do.
All those trees will be coming down, right?
No, four trees will be, existing trees will be. Remained. So you say there's a berm, now there's four trees that are going to stay. Most of them are to the right.
The ones that are staying, you mean?
Yes.
Yeah, so actually putting in a berm could.
There might be yellow tape around some of them.
Good example for the berm, like the solar panel across from the mall going into the road. This is, I mean, it's crazy. It just don't make sense. It's not pretty. Whoever came up with that bylaws. I mean, people make mistakes. I think it's a mistake. All right. Jake, what do you want to comment?
I have no comments at this time.
Jen?
None at this time.
I'm, I'm very concerned about paving. I really would like to see, for this amount of car, amount of cars, I would like, personally, I'd like to see paving. That's, that's too much.
That is, that is one thing I didn't mention. It would be nice to see paving on there, like you said, for handicapped people and whatnot. And I mean, honestly, I wouldn't go shop at a car lot that wasn't paved. So I think it would be good.
There are numerous used car lots in town that don't have paving.
I do understand, and they were granted a long time ago. It doesn't, too wrong doesn't make right, and we should go forward, not.
Okay, I understand that.
You know what I'm saying?
Where does it stop, though? You know, do I have to pave all of Ray Avenue?
No, no, just, Ray Ave is not your problem. Your parking lot. Ray Ave is not your problem. That's absolutely not your problem.
Ray Ave, is Ray Ave, excuse me, is Ray Avenue paved?
No, no.
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 And I re, did reclaimed asphalt at my expense on Ray Avenue. Because it was rather messy when I got there.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's nice.
This is reclaimed asphalt in that picture?
No.
I think that was the.
That's what it looked like before.
Yeah, that was previously.
Oh, okay. It's a good thing.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, whoa.
Yeah, no, no.
So it's, something is not right here.
It looks much better now.
But anyway, I mean, like I said, twenty-four car dealership, twenty cars, it's not much traffic. But we, we do have to do it right because once the special permit recorded, it's good forever. Even if you shut the place and somebody come ten years from now, open it, he can't.
So that's pretty much going to be your decision as far as, you know?
No, that's my opinion. It's not, I, they might vote against me, I don't know, but that's my opinion. And you do understand that we giving you a special permit? If, if the board decided to grant it, doesn't mean we're giving you a license to sell cars. You have to go, that's the selectmen, they own the license. Do you understand? So then they, you should see them during the process. I don't know if they.
Well, I wanted to get through this. If it's not zoned, I can't do anything.
It is zoned. It's special permit. It's zoned for it, based on the special permit.
How can I transfer the license to you?
Transfer.
I have a license.
The license and dealer for the used car dealers, for the lot. It's, you can't transfer, selectmen, that's their business, but it belongs to the lot, not to a person. You can't take it with you. But I don't see a problem, but I'm not the selectman. They own this license, this license, not us. But just to let you know, if the board grants you a special permit to sell cars, doesn't mean we're giving you a license. That's the selectmen.
No, I understand that. I understand that part of it.
All right. Let's, like I said, I guess I'm the only one read Charlie's letter. We'll let, we'll let.
I read it.
You read it?
I read it.
We'll let Charlie do some comments on it and explanation.
But just to, just to back up my reasoning for the paving, the drainage calculations that were done, were done on the basis of it essentially being an impervious surface, just the same as if it were paved. So if you did put paving in there, it wouldn't make any difference. The drainage design is adequate. I had a concern that local testing had not been done to determine what the soils were like. They did that. It turns out that the soil conditions are fine. They're the same as what I had reported for the septic system on the far end of the lot fifteen, twenty years ago. One thing I did request was on the front drainage area. The system itself ends up in the subsoil that is not the best for infiltration. So they need to include a strip out there. But the parking area itself was six inches of gravel with only four inches of reclaimed sitting on top. A couple of passes with a snowplow after a day like this, and that four inches is going to be in a pile at the end of the parking lot. Or it's going to be muddy, or it's going to be something that people are not going to want to travel on in order to see the cars. If that material goes, you're going to end up with a basin in the middle of the parking lot because right now it's pitched all in one direction. It's not crowned in the middle. So for those reasons, I was suggesting that the best way to do it is to pave it. That way, it maintains it. Not only that, but it also delineates the twenty-four spaces that he's shown on his plan. You can't paint stripes on gravel, it won't stay. So my other recommendation, if you decided that you did not want to go with the paving, that you limit the specific number of spaces or the number of vehicles to the number of spaces that are shown in this plan so that it would be limited to no more than twenty-four, which included the customer service, the handicap space, and the twenty-one vehicle spaces for display. But my main concern is for the, just for the, it's the aesthetics as well as the use of the site and for the convenience of the customers that would be coming in.
My, my concern is the same personally. The reason is being safe, like I said, the special permit, they're for good. Say you sell the property and you don't, you don't pave it. This problem is going to continue and continue. We can't, we can't, it's not like if you sell it, it goes away. You understand? So I would, I'm, I'm really personally would like to see the paving. It's a better job, easy maintenance for you, for everyone. It's a win-win for everybody. I have no problem for the permit to sell cars there and for the, with the house with it and everything else. Personally, I have no problem to get rid of that berm because I think it's crazy. Nice landscape and plan will suffice. And this is my opinion. And again, we'll run it to the board, see what they think. Jake?
I agree.
Jen?
Yeah, I agree.
Jim, you could comment.
You know how I stand on it. I think that the guy's been tortured enough. Let him have his business.
Yeah, I, I wanted to have his business.
Yeah, I know.
I mean.
I mean, he, he kind of drug his feet a little bit to get here.
We didn't torture him. We're nice. That's the first time.
Well, I just think that our process, not our, but you know, our town's process is cumbersome.
But believe me, you'll appreciate it if you pave it. It's not, it's not a lot of investment, but paving is, is the way to go. Veronica?
I'd like to see a detailed landscape plan for the front.
He does have them.
Without having the, I know, but I want to understand it, I guess, a little bit, trying to make heads and tails of it.
Yeah. Bob, do you have another comment on this?
I agree with you, Mr. Chairman, pertaining to the paving. Charlie, I read your letter, and I agree with what you put in the letter. The plowing would be, absolutely be an issue, pushing that stuff around. And it would never, ever be something that would be acceptable for dealing with a used car lot. That's, that's my opinion.
My only question is, so that's the entire car lot has to be paved? Not a portion of it?
No, I would say the, my personal opinion would be the entire car lot.
Wherever you get a display cars and a customer park, if you, if you're willing to, I mean, we could put, I don't think you're going to start construction now. If you're willing to do the discommitment, come back January eighth with a plan for the paving. And we're, personally, I have no problem putting it to rest and grant the permit.
I have a question out of curiosity. I know that you said you're removing the current driveway. Are you going to have another driveway to that house?
There's one on the left. Did you see the plan?
Yeah, here, there's a driveway for the house, which is actually going to be expanded to fit two car wide.
Oh, so there's two? Oh, okay.
Yeah, there's two existing.
Okay.
Yep.
So what you wish is, would you like to come back next hearing with final plan? I have no problem. Are you guys okay with getting rid of the, that big mound called berm?
It's okay with top dogs, yeah.
Let me ask, what do you need to redraw if he's going to pave what's in gray right here?
He needs to show the details with the, with the elevation.
Thickness of it and all that.
And elevation and pitch and stuff.
Actually, the, the grading in the pitch could stay exactly the same it is, as it is.
I don't have a plan of the grading.
The plan view would be exactly the same.
Should be sheet two of three, Mr. Chairman.
What date was signed, these plans, on the fifty-five, eleven-five?
Yeah, eleven-five nineteen.
Look for sheet two.
If you don't have it, I could show you this one. Got the full set here.
Oh, okay. It's right here. One oh-one, one oh-two. And.
If you'll notice, it's all pitching from Cranberry Highway toward the back end of the parking area.
Okay, okay.
It has a stone filter strip, and then it has the bioretention area in the corner.
Yeah, yeah.
And the drainage calculations were all done on the assumption that it was the same impervious surface as a paved parking area. So there'll be no changes.
Charlie, what's the leaching chamber field?
That is a small area, the subsurface. It's got, you know, those, you've actually used them a couple of times on your projects. They're the, the plastic units that are sort of.
Right, right.
Beehive-shaped.
Right, I, I know.
They go in the ground. The water will travel to it from the surface, drop inside and be infiltrated. That's the system which needs the five-foot strip out.
We do actually have a note on here, on the detail, for existing top subsoil and any unsuitable beneath infiltration basin to be removed.
Okay, but you didn't say about the width.
So is that for stone water?
And you mean, so outside of the stone?
Yeah, I got it.
You mean, there would have to be?
Outside the sidewall of the area that you use for design, expand it by five feet. Replace it with basically perch sand.
Yeah.
And then build your system.
Just like you would do the septic system.
Exactly.
Okay. If the board willing to move forward with the motion, are you willing to update the plans for the remove and replace, like Charlie said?
Yeah, yeah, so it would just be two.
But strip and replace with percocet sand?
Yeah, so for changing it to pavement, we would only need to change the, the cross-section detail. And then we could add a note to the detail of the strip out.
And paving, you just got to follow our bylaws, the thickness of gravel, things like this.
They've got six inches of gravel with four inches of reclaimed on top. They could reduce that to a total thickness of eight, provided it's all reclaimed.
Okay, so eight and three inches of pavement?
Yeah.
That saves them a couple of dollars?
Yeah. By the time you get through with the paving, it's probably going to be a wash, but you're going to get a better product out of it because it'll be more stable. Rather than having a six-inch thickness and then a little, small thickness of reclaimed, if everything is reclaimed, it compacts well, it drains well, gives a good surface to put the paving on.
And it's a lot cheaper than gravel. A lot cheaper. Okay. So what you wish is, you want to go forward like this? You want to talk about it for a couple of minutes outside, come back?
Yeah.
You want to talk about it?
Yeah, please.
All right, let's do a two-minute recess, let the gentleman think about it.
Okay.
Make sure he understands what he's agreeing to.
Right. Well, he doesn't have to do it. He still don't have to do it if he doesn't want. While he's thinking about it.
Can we move on to this other thing? I thought that we had already approved these changes.
The, the money thing, the fees?
Yeah.
No, we discussed them, but we had to.
Oh, now it's on.
This is a, this is a formal hearing.
So this is just the formal hearing on what we discussed. So all we have to do is approve it, open a public hearing and approve it.
Right.
All right.
Yes.
Presumably, in theory, that won't take that long.
So this is what we discussed last time?
Yes.
Well, let's make a formal vote and he come back. Tell Veronica to pay attention on this, think about it.
We're gonna, we're gonna take a vote on this while we're, while we're in recess. We're not in recess. We're gonna go to another item.
Remember those we talked about last week?
These we talked about?
Oh, okay.
Everybody agreed to the fees? We're gonna pull a vote in a minute.
So they go before town meeting?
I got a question. Do they go?
Can we discuss this while they're discussing it?
We're not going to vote on it.
Well, she's back to, she's back.
Oh, yeah, take your time.
I'm paying attention to this at the moment.
So you know, okay, so we're not going to.
I'm trying to help you guys. You always want to rush out of here. I'm the one who doesn't care. I'm helping you out, right?
That's right.
Pretty good story, but anyway.
They're ready for you.
Oh, okay, sorry. Yes, we'll continue to January eighth.
And, okay.
So, well, one thing I just want to ask.
Yeah.
If we agree to make those changes, could we do a conditional approval tonight?
We can.
Okay. I think that's what we probably.
If you would like, I have no problem if somebody have an issue, everybody is okay. We give it an approval based on the condition that he does the paving and stuff. You guys okay with this?
I'm fine with that.
Oh, I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
And they don't even have to come back January eighth.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
I would like to know a little bit more about the landscaping plan, though. I'm back for that.
What exactly?
Okay, so, so for me aesthetically, I think it's important to have the front of that lot look nice because you're going to have cars there.
Right.
So when there's a berm, there's definitely delineation, there's a clean, nice, clean.
That's the landscaping.
Area that you look at. Are you, what? I'm, I'm looking at this. Are you planning on making an area that's, I guess, designated as, as like a planting area? Because the berm would kind of create that.
Yeah, no. It is basically the entire, you have, there's a landscaping plan.
I do have this, but I'm just, I'm just, I don't, I don't know what all this is.
Basically, the entire area between the right, between the layout of Cranberry Highway and where we're proposing to pave.
Yeah.
Will be landscaping.
This, that's what these are? This, that's what these are? These are shrubs? Is that what this is?
No, that's a schedule.
There's many different plantings.
There's two-hundred-and-thirty-five plantings on the property.
In the front, yeah.
No, no, not...
Hundred-and-seventy.
You just don't wanna build a two-foot berm.
Correct.
Yeah.
You just wanna put it down on a level, and that makes...
I'm, I'm fine having it be level. I just want something to be there, even if it is level, as in, that's, right.
You've got a hundred, between the four remaining trees, you have a hundred-and-seventy-four.
Just looking at a car lot.
Listen, excuse me, we're gonna confuse the secretary making the minutes?
Yes.
So let's take turns, because she'll have hard time doing the minutes?
Yeah.
Uh, so one other time, so she could write the minutes. So do you understand what he's saying?
Yes, I do. That, that clarifies it more for me when I, this is basically kinda like the line of where the...
And I believe the entire area, correct me if I'm wrong, is a mulch bed, and then the plantings will be in there.
And with loom and, uh, grass.
Right.
Okay, that sounds good.
Yeah, I, the, the dotted area here, I believe, is all, yeah, it's, it's all loomed and seeded with grass. And then the white strip here with all the plantings in it is gonna be mulched, I believe.
There's that table, the table on the plan too, Veronica, shows you what type of plants there will be, the table at the top.
Is this here?
That's where, there on the left.
There's a whole list of the, not only the type of plants, but the number of plants that'll be in there. So there's quite a variety, right there.
See like four of them, ten of them, twen- you see?
The palm trees? We had snow today. Come on, Jake.
All right, uh, just to go back to this, so I'm willing to grant a variance, get rid of the berm and be grass. I'm willing to, personally, I'm willing to say yes based on you strip and replace for drainage and pave in the parking lot according to town bylaws.
Yep.
Is everybody okay with this before we close?
Yes.
So, even though I'm not voting, so that I understand it correctly, you close the public hearing, you guys can take a vote, and all they have to do is come in and show Ken or Sonia who changes to the plan.
And get okay from Charlie, that...
Charlie says okey-dokey. They don't have to come back here.
That's right.
They're done tonight.
They're done.
Just do it within the twenty-day appeal period, though.
Right.
Well, does the twenty-day appeal period start?
From today.
From today?
From the vote.
When it gets, when it gets submitted to the town clerk.
So if Ken type, if Sonia types Monday and...
You gotta sign it.
It's twenty days from there.
Somebody's gotta sign it, right?
After being signed, right?
But we gotta go to town and sign it.
So let's, so I just suggest, if you're gonna do it within that twenty days, tell them how many days before they gotta get it to Sonia. Don't come in on day nineteen.
Let's, let's put it this way. If we vote tonight, Sonia's gonna have to type it. Most, tomorrow's Thursday, Friday is closed. Most likely, everybody will go there Monday or Tuesday. Hopefully, she types the decision, it goes to the clerk twenty days from now. So you're looking about, within the months, you should get it done, all these things done.
We, we should be able to get you the plans next week. Um, it's a, it's a minor change on our end.
Ken, if, if we make a decision and Sonia, Sonia types it, is it feasible by Monday she types it and we go sign it and she submit it to the clerk or Tuesday?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Although she has fourteen days, but we'll make sure.
Mm-hmm.
So try to, as much as, as fast as you can, the better for you.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay?
All right.
So at the most, thirty days from, from today, at the most. Don't, don't wait any longer, because if somebody appeals it, you'll have a problem.
Right.
All right, before, I know there's nobody in, uh, there's a lady in the back. Is there anyone, anyone here in favor or against this project? I hear none. So let's move to close the public hearing. Move by Jen, so have second to close.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, abstain. Uh, we have, okay, let's do, first of all, we have to make a motion for a variance to allow him to do without the, the berm, to relieve him from that, to grant the variance, to relieve him from the, to building the berm.
And if you have to cite the, uh, the actual bylaw, I believe it's right on the front sheet of the plans, the section of the bylaw.
You know what? I have such a messy sheets. Which section is it? Thirteen?
The berm is Article seven, section seven-six-three-point-four.
All right, so can I have a motion to grant him relief on Article seven, section seven-sixty-three-point-four, which is, it's a variance from that two-foot berm?
Make a motion.
Mr. Haskel, make a motion to grant that variance. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain. So five-zero-zero, five-zero-zero to get the variance. Second motion on a special permit, condition with the strip and replace and the pavement and Charlie's approval within, at the most, thirty day, twenty-five days from today. Do I have a motion? Can somebody adopt this motion? So moved?
So moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jake. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain. Okay, good luck.
Thank you.
So I hope it works out for you and use all luck. All right, now let's discuss the fees. Everybody look at them. That's what we talked about last time. We have to vote on them.
Looks to be, uh, in order with what we agreed last time. Other discussion.
Make a motion.
Yeah. Everybody over?
Sorry, what is it, Jen?
We just need to, uh, formally approve the fee changes that we discussed last time. We're holding a public hearing on the matter.
So somebody needs to make a motion to accept the fee changes as presented?
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
Do I have a second by Jen? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Aye, aye.